Welcome, everybody. I'm going to call you your board. A special board meeting monthly to talk about the facilities improvement. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Sandy Lanning. I'm a board member. I'm at this today, so please do not speak. All the board members are on screen and can speak. And the rest are all on listen mode. And in a moment, Ben will tell everybody how to put your questions in. Once the two presentations are over, we're going to put questions in online. And then from there, we'll have anyone from the audience do questions. But please be mindful when we're asking questions. Ask the questions, so try not to be too long. Okay? So we're going to start with Gail Fisher on the Club Facilities Update.
Thank you, Sandy.
Yeah, just for those of you who are online, you can see my screen. It outlines asking a question. If you go to weather on my application. You can see the window on the right-hand screen. You click question. Everyone opens up field versus text in here. So you can type your question there, and then we will address them in the order that they're submitted.
Okay, sorry, Gail.
No worries. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I'm here to report on the activities that we've had actually since March with the town hall in between on the Club Facilities Improvement Subcommittee. So if anybody's counting, we've had 28 meetings to date. And the minutes from all these meetings, except last week's, which have to be approved tomorrow, are on the website. So if you, that's the best place to go to get up-to-date information on what the team is up to. The primary activity that we engaged in during that this time period has been the wall out of the Club Facilities Improvement Plan. Many of you had a chance to either view in person or watch the video of the town hall, which we had on April 19th. The team followed that up with three-member poster sessions of two-plus hours each and an online member survey where all members had the opportunity to provide input on the plans that they had seen at the town hall, or even if they didn't see them at the town hall. So we presented these findings at the May 28th board meeting. We were happy to report that the majority of the feedback was positive. Most of the questions that came out, whether it was at the town hall, the poster sessions, or on the survey, most of the comments were questions directed at details of the plan or costs of funding. Members also provided in our poster sessions useful suggestions to the subcommittee, which we have taken in hand. And a few members, I will say, were opposed to parts or all of the plan, but those were in the minority. Activities that we've done subsequent to the town hall, and I'm going to share some of these with you in a minute. We've interviewed three interior design firms, and the committee agreed with the GM recommendation, the Higher Club Design Group, to develop the overall design plans leading to the vote package. We've developed consultants, the pool spa and the bistro kitchen designs. We have also, in the interest of costs and what the cost will be going forward, we have received an opinion of cost from a local general contractor on the cost of construction. We're working with Grady Minor, who did the west side parking lot, on additional parking in the east parking lot. And we're working with FitRev on the fitness equipment and budget. So I'm happy to report that as of the end of May, we have, of our $125,000 budget, we have spent $67,000-plus thousand to date. These fees have been for the owner's rep and the architect. And we are on track at this point in time to stay within that budget leading to the vote package. So the first slide I'm going to share with you is the pool and spa design. And I think many, many people saw the, in the architectural plan, the pool, the pool design as the architect laid it out. But we've had an aquatic pool designer out of Jacksonville do the pool spa and spa layout for us, which gives us a lot more room for water aerobics. It gives us a sun shelf, a zero entry, and then the spa design mirrors the pool. Not exactly, but the general shape of it is the shape of the, of the main pool. The next item I wanted to touch on is the new bistro kitchen design. And you can see in the bottom, bottom of the picture is the layout of the current bistro overlaid with what will be the new kitchen. And there are some, a couple of offices also added down there, but you can see this, this makes, takes all the available space to use to give us enough space to do food prep in a more efficient and timely fashion. For, for, for those of you wondering about the walk-up window to, to get food from the bistro, if you're on the golf course, that will remain in place where it is now. There will be tables around the old, the current bistro, and there will be windows. So you will be able to look in to the kitchen and watch food prep happening. There will be a pizza oven. The exact location is yet to be determined. It may, some of the, some of the pieces of equipment may shift around a little bit. I think Indra and Liam are moving their offices down to some of the extra space that is going to be gained with some of the renovations. And I'm happy to report that the employees will now have a, be able to have a break room because they don't currently have one where they can go and have a break other than to kind of go outside if they don't have any time to themselves. So, I'm sorry. Comment? So anyways, this is made for adequate flow to run in. The, the new bistro itself will be off to this, to the right side. So they'll be able to access and walk into the new, new bistro from, from the new bistro kitchen design. We had a lot of questions about how confident we were, we, or some questions about in the cost of construction. And in April, we had Jeff Nunner, our owner's representative, based on the costs that he was familiar with, with current cost of construction in the area, do an estimate for us of the cost of construction. And then Kern and Young, a local general contractor, gave us an opinion of cost in June. And if you look to the bottom, the current estimate from current, the Kern and Young estimate, our estimate is within 1% difference. So we came in at 5.46, and they came in 5.53 million. I just want to remind everybody that the construction piece of the, of the facilities project of the $7 million is the, is the largest piece of it, at 5.5 million. Kern and Young said it could come in plus or minus 10% based on this estimate. So it's possible, maybe not likely, but possible that the construction will not be at the level of $5.5 million. But there is a healthy contingency built in there of a half a million dollars towards construction. So these were based on projecting the costs of construction out to what they are today, out to the year 2023. So we were pretty happy to see that what we expected the cost to be, a local general contractor also expects them to be in the same ballpark, within 1% of each other. Okay, next slide. Moving forward, as we said, we've, a contract has been negotiated with Club Design Group, and we're going to begin the design work with Lisa Briggs, who's the president of this group, and her team tomorrow at our subcommittee meeting. We need to finalize the design concepts for the pool spa kitchen, the fitness space, the parking lot, and have the architect drop them into the facilities plan. It may happen when we go, when, when David Portman goes to put, place these into the, especially the pool and spa, into the plan, that there may be some tweaks that need to be made, but they shouldn't substantially change the plan. So we have it, we have, we have yet to do that. Once we have all the designs, we'll have David drop all of them into the current plan as he has it. We'll fine-tune any cost estimates. We need a cost estimate from the, on the finishings and the furnishings. We're going to prepare for the town hall. We're going to prepare the vote package. We'll continue to respond to any member questions and concerns, and then we'll, of course, continue to track the budget spend against what the board approved last October. So with that, I open it up to any questions.
Any questions?
We'll do the question, questions at the end.
Oh, I just meant from board, I meant from board members. Okay, all right.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead with the golf part now.
Is this, is this board member comment time? Oh, okay. Gail, I think your committee is doing a great job. I think you've, you've been nodding the i's and crossing the t's, and your work should give everybody a lot of confidence that you're heading in the right direction and that your head is on straight as well. Thanks, good job.
Thank you. Then Dan Brockton, he's an officer, he's a secretary. Any other board questions?
I feel like you're muted.
Well, I would like to just, you know, reinforce what Dan said. A lot of work has gone into this over the last four years, and I think that you have really, really done it. You and your team of members working on your ad hoc committee have done an excellent job, and I feel very confident with the information that you just gave us. It makes me feel like you've really done your homework. Thank you.
And that was, excuse me, that was Mrs. Dede. So board members, when you speak, if you want to give your name before you speak, then the audience can hear, so that everyone here knows whose comment, okay?
Okay, sure. Sorry about that. Thanks.
And one of the things I, I didn't mention was that, especially with the pool and the kitchen design, how excited Liam and Ben and Jeff are to have upgraded facilities and facilities that they really can produce quality aerobics for a lot more people in the pool, and also the ability to really work in the kitchen and put out the meals that our members would like to have in an efficient and timely manner. And Tim, I wasn't, I wasn't there when Liam saw the plans, but you may want to comment on that as well.
Yeah, no, I totally agree with what you said. Liam is very excited about the kitchen design, not only from the perspective of being able to put out timed food in the kitchen that can, that can support the number of covers that we do in the bistro, but also from menu variety, too, because we're a little bit hampered now with the current kitchen size to be able to offer a lot of variety. So the new kitchen concept is to actually have a separate lunch and dinner menu in the bistro, so really provide service throughout the day, but be able to switch it over, let's say, you know, four o'clock to a, to an actual menu that has more dinner-type entrees.
Thank you, Gail. Now we're going to go to Tom Peaperton as he does the golf course renovation.
Okay, Sandy, thank you. Ben, do you want to go to the first slide? There we go. So I just want to, you know, to update the board, since we have kind of each individually met in the month of May, our goal at that time was to pass by you the recommendations of the ad hoc committee that we were going to make to the architect. Those recommendations were made at the end of May. The architect has provided us a revised initial master plan, which is right in front of us right now. Our ad hoc committee reviewed that, I guess Tuesday of this week, and we're all okay with the changes that have been made. And so what we want to do now is just go through this picture with you guys, just to update you on where we are with the golf course and, and the changes. So Ben, I don't know if you have a cursor there to find hole number two is where we would start. And, yeah, there you go. Okay? So I'm just going to kind of go through the changes that the committee recommended and the, and the response that has come back from our architect. And it's all very good stuff, I think. So starting in hole number two, we've added an, an additional tee behind the existing tee, which will lengthen the hole for some players. We want to focus just a little bit, and this, this is kind of a side note. You know, all of us are aware of that kind of a very wet, dirty spot on the left side of two. You know, we're going to do whatever we can to dress that up a little bit. It's a tough spawn on the golf course. The balls hit the bank and go down into that muck, and whatever we can do to make that look better and play better, we're going to try to do on the second hole. So that's just kind of a side note. Ben, the next one I might go to is the, is number five. There you go. And on number five, the, the sand trap, or from, from the men's tees that is really behind the hole, and from the women's tees, which is really on the right side of the hole, has been re, it's going to appear again. It wasn't on the last version, so it will appear on this version. The next hole we want to look at is number six. The bunkers on the left will be very much where they are right now. They have been moved in the initial plan. I think we're going to bring them right back where they are and separate them as they were. The other comment on kind of six and seven regarding the mounds, you know, if you think about those mounds, they're about 40 yards wide, you know, if you think about them across the mounds. And this is just, everyone needs to understand, we are going to continue to maintain the height of those mounds, but we are going to make them more narrow, meaning we're going to pick up 10 yards of fairway on six and 10 yards of fairway on seven. And we will narrow the mounds and retain the height. You know, we have lots of members that their homes look at those mounds, and they are very happy with those mounds. So we're going to continue to have those mounds. They will continue to retain their current height. And, you know, to the extent that there are trees on them or not, you know, that's kind of the landscaping that will be figured out as time goes by. But the important thing to take away there is that we're going to widen both those fairways and that the height will continue to exist on those mounds. Ben, the next hole is number nine. Small change there, the, the left-hand fairway bunker will continue to be where it is right now. It was thought to move that further down the fairway, but that is going to reside very much where it is right now. Next hole we want to look at is 12. This is a very, just a fantastic change on 12. In early June, the architect came to Stonebridge. He and Mark, you know, looked at some holes, looked at some issues. And on number 12, it's not easy to see on this small rendering, but we are going to attempt to move the tees to the left side over where the berm currently exists on 12. All of you who've played know that, you know, that left-hand berm on 12 near the tees is probably one of the least, it's not a great-looking spot. And, and we think that we can move the tees over there. We can still block the Green Tree Shopping Center that is next door, and that we can make a better hole in every way, and, and then also improve the visual look there. So that is a nice improvement that I think will happen. Also, I want to mention on 12, if you look at this rendering, the, the water near the green will extend, actually in the fairway end, will extend back another 20 yards like it does today. That pond is not going to be touched. This picture doesn't do a good job of showing that. The single picture that we have of this hole does do a good job of showing that. So that pond on the right will extend back into the middle of that first condo on there. Also on number 12, the maintenance path behind the green has been done away with. There will be no maintenance path behind the 12th green, which is one of the requests that were made. Going to hole 14, Ben, if you can find that one. This is kind of, this is just kind of a side note. Apparently, we have drainage issues over on 14. When we have heavy rains, that the condos that reside next to that hole have issues. And so we will make sure that the drainage is addressed on 14, so that when we have these heavy rains, and this is just a side issue, and I know Mark and the architect and the design people will work on that to make sure that we do something about the issue that the folks in those condos have. The next hole is 15. If you can see on 15, the lake in front of the tees is untouched. There will be no change to that lake. In particular, the southwest corner was an issue for members who lived in Braeburn. That corner will not be touched. If you had a bigger rendering of this, you would see that the number, the current number one tee basically is going to be done away with. The number one tee markers will be placed where the current number two tee markers are, and a new tee will be built in front of the men's and women's room that resides in that back corner. So that will be a new number two tee will be built there, and that will enable us to not touch that lake that is in front of the tees on 15. The other thing I want to say about 15 is the cart path will go behind the 15th green, but landscaping will be done to make sure that those people who live in the eyelash there behind Braeburn are not negatively impacted by that. Mark and his team will, I'm certain, do a great job blocking that to make that not an issue for people who live behind there. And then the last change that I want to talk about is on hole number 18. A very exciting change on 18. The entire pond that fronts the green on 18 will be, or we're proposing that that entire pond be surrounded with a rock wall, except for the Ashton Oaks side of that pond. That rock wall will go all the way from the fairway end of that pond down to the green, around that, where we have that bunker and a couple of tee, palm trees in the bunker, and then it will go all the way over towards the tennis courts. And this will be a very stunning visual from the clubhouse for the membership. And, you know, that, that's something that we're proposing to do. Money will be an issue there. We've got to make sure that this is something we can afford to do. But as there will be no stone bridge, so to speak, that the membership will be able to see from the clubhouse, this rock wall will, number one, it'll be a great view, and number two, it will enable us to widen the fairway a little bit, to make more level lines over toward the right, and give people a little more room to hit that second shot down the fairway on 18. So those are, those are the things that we requested of the architect in, in his response. Our ad hoc committee has reviewed them all and is in favor and supports this revised initial master plan. The next thing that's going to happen is that our, our committee, actually a couple of people on our committee are going to draft notes, descriptive notes, for each and every hole, not just these ones that we talked about today with changes, but each hole, one through 18. And we will talk about what's changing on every hole, how it is an advantage to Stonebridge, what it does and what it changes. So that's something we will be working on during this next month. And then those photos of the holes and the notes that are then approved by our ad hoc committee will be used to create posters for all the membership to see early this fall to take a real good look at in preparation for the vote. So that is, those are the changes and where we are on that. Ben, if we could go one more slide forward.
I'll just mention to the group, too, I know this is hard to see, so we'll have the slides up on the website, so that way, a facilities page, that way you can, you know, see it on the website and be able to zoom in and see, see it in more detail.
Yep. And so we just, I've got, we've, Ben has two or three slides here. We just want to show you examples of kind of rock walls and rock bulkheads that Kip Schulze has used at other clubs. This isn't, this is one example. Ben, if you want, you can just go to the other, the others. Just to give everybody an example, this is a little bridge that is in the process of being built. This may be a countryside, I'm not sure. That might be the finished product. That looks good. And I think there's one more. So these are the kinds of things that we are hoping to incorporate into the design and the execution of the changes at Stonebridge where it is appropriate. And just wanted you guys to take, have a look at samples of what he has done. And then lastly, this is just a sample of a berm. This is our number 11. These are the kind of berms, I mean, our perimeter at Stonebridge is very, very important to us. And this is just an example of what, what a great job a berm can be. And this is 11. This blocks a mockley road, and all of our area is getting busier and busier. I think airport pulling is going to be, I think they're going to do work there. So this is just an example of the kind of work that we will be doing landscaping-wise to make sure that the appearance, as well as the design of, of the golf course changes, are great for everybody. And I guess the, just the last thing I want to note is now that we have a revised initial master plan, Tim Jones is, will be asking the architect to provide us with a, an updated project estimate budget. The last, the current budget we have is from March of 2019. Obviously, that's over two years ago. There are some changes in here. Hopefully that, you know, we, I don't know how they will affect the cost, but that's what we have to do. So we're going to ask for a new estimate from the architect, and that will give us, I guess, a sense of where we are and what we need to change, if anything. So that's kind of where we are with, with the golf course. Does anybody on the board have any, any questions about that or comments, or hopefully it's very much what we talked about the last month, individually?
I have a couple, this is Sandy Lanning. I have a couple of questions.
I have a couple of, this is Sandy, I have a couple of questions. Um, are we going to be moving that rock pulver?
On eight? Um, Jim, you mean, are we talking about the, uh, the, we're on eight? Yes, yes, we will be moving that. We'll probably be moving that sandy behind the green. That's a, that's a functional pool there and it needs to exist. We just want to get it out of the way, particularly the ladies' golfers.
Maybe, uh, what about 11? You didn't bring up 11. Are you going to move the cart path on the inside as, or are you leaving it?
On 11, the cart path will exist right where it is now, most of the way up. It will then come in behind the green, just like it, um, was shown in the original rendering. There's no changes to the, um, original rendering on hole number 11.
Okay, okay. Uh, what about Stone Bridge?
Stone Bridge is still planned for 17. Um, it will go, it will, after you hit your tee shot on 17, you will go over a stone bridge is the plan, and you will see that stone bridge while you play the 16th hole. You'll use it when you go over the 17th hole, and then hopefully you'll see it when you're on the 18th tee.
And I have one last question. On number five, if you're on the women's tee, originally they were going to take that whole area to the right and put water. Have you decided not to do that? It did show.
That is, that is unchanged. That is the plan.
There will be no water there?
No, there will be water there. The orig- if we're talking about the same thing, on number five, um, on the right side, um, there will be water there at this point.
Okay.
And that was the original plan.
Okay. This is Kathy Taylor. This is Kathy Taylor. May I ask a question, Tom?
Of course.
Um, Tom, the, the new ponds that will be created, um, I'm thinking mainly on hole number three where new water will be added. Um, right now, the ponds are rather unsightly. Is there any hope that the new ponds might have some kind of a brick or stone wall that would keep them from eroding, which is obviously what the, right now, the vegetation is supposed to do?
Um, you know, part of the, part of the, um, new pond on three does have a stone wall by the green, and then it comes back at some point and that wall stops. Um, you know, we do have a company who manages our ponds that we work with to try to keep them in good shape, um, and, and we will continue to do that.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you.
Sure. Anybody else?
So, Tom, I, it's Kathy Dede. I have a question. So, um, that was a wonderful aerial view of the, um, changes that are going to take place. Will we have something more specific hole by hole?
Oh, absolutely. You've all seen, you've all seen the original renderings where we had a picture of each hole next to the existing hole. That, that would, that will again exist, and we will have an individual picture with the notes that, that I talked about a minute ago. And, you know, our plan is to show that to the membership, um, so that they have a, similar to the, what Gail did, um, with the poster boards, so that they can really get a, a very, not a computer-sized view of what it is, but a real good view, a picture of what the hole is going to look like and what the changes are in those particular holes.
That sounds great. And I like the idea of your committee putting together, you know, sort of a descriptive, um, narrative on the holes. Will they have that ready by September, do you think?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Um, with the vote in November, I want to make sure we give the membership enough time to see what we're doing. And I love, I love the rock wall on 18, by the way. Fabulous.
We're, we're hoping and expecting that in either late September or early October, um, we will have, you know, basically 18 poster boards, or actually 19 because of the practice area, with a narrative on each one, um, that we will then invite the membership to come in and look at, and we will talk about all the changes individually or whatever anybody wants to talk about.
Okay, great. At one point you, um, one last question. At one point you thought that you might be able to light that bridge on 17 so that you could actually see it driving on Winding Oaks Way. Is that still the plan?
Um, I, I don't expect that will happen.
Okay.
My guess.
All right, okay.
Uh, to the board, also Mark Metzger is here, so we go with questions. Okay, um, is, Ben is going to put up questions that are online, and depending on what they are, probably Tom or Gail or Jim will be asked right now. So, questions, please. If you can read those.
Okay, the first question is from, uh, Larry Traul, and he asks, what is the relationship between the seven, nine, facility cost estimate and the five-point-five construction estimate?
What's the difference?
The difference is, is all soft cost, so that the 5.5 is all construction. So the other is, uh, FFNA, soft cost, engineering and so forth.
Did you repeat that on mic?
Oh, sure, sorry.
Could you ask the question, repeat the question first, please?
And the question was for Mr. Traul, and I don't have the, uh, the game show voice like, like Ben does, but I'll try. Was from Larry Traul, uh, the question was the difference of the 5.5 construction cost versus a $7 million cost estimate? And the 5.5 is construction. And the difference of 1.5 million is soft cost, so that's FFNA, uh, engineering, camp crew, all professionals that will be involved in the process.
Our next question is from Mary Ann Brant, and she asks, are there any changes to the bridge from hole 16 to 17, or is that where the sum rate will be next?
From this, we're talking from the 16th green to the 17th tee. Um, I think those two wooden bridges will probably, um, go away. I think there will be a cart path behind there to get to the 17th tee.
Okay, next question is from, uh, Peter Glada, and he says, notes water facility added toward the green on 15 on the right. Where is that water coming from?
In the middle of the fairway on the 15, yes, there, there will be a, a new pond dug there on the right side. That's correct. Um, the, the water, it's, I, I, I'm not sure if he's asking for the wa- the water itself. Um, Mark may be much better to respond to this, but our expectation is that the, um, the groundwater will fill that lake.
Well, and it also is to maintain our surface water area. So when we, uh, create more landing area to improve sustainability, we have to offset that somewhere toward if we're moving water. So that pond there allows us to fit in some other areas.
Our next question is from, uh, and, uh, when do we expect to see an updated cost estimate from the golf course architect?
I'm sorry, Ben, an updated what?
Ben, we can't understand you. You're echoing or something. So could you do something with a microphone, maybe?
I would hold the microphone further away so you can talk louder. I think I'll be blocking the hell out of that. So I'll repeat that more times. Uh, when do we expect to see an updated cost estimate from the golf course architect that's going to be updated, uh, designs?
Um, Tim, you might be the best response there.
Sure. Uh, I, I don't know yet. Of course, we're going to have, uh, you know, well before the town hall meeting, I'm, I'm sure we'll have it before we do the poster board sessions in October.
And that's everything we have, uh, from remote attendees. We can open it up to.
Okay. We can open up?
So, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
So for the online comments, just so everyone can hear online, because we do have quite a few members online, if you can come up to the microphone that way, you're picking up not only for the room, but for the speaker that goes through the online platform. So if you would come up, say your name, and then you can ask your question.
Molly Anne from Middleburg, I have a thought. If Liam had to spend $130 a month for $1,300 a year for 13 years, would he be so excited? I'm not concerned about Liam. And if almost 70% of the members said $100 or less they'd be willing to spend, where do we come up with?
I didn't hear it.
Very tough to hear. Very tough to understand.
Can you repeat the question for us, near a microphone?
There.
It's, it's this that we need to pick up.
68% of the members voted to spend $100 or less a month for any improvements. Where did we get $124 from? Thank you.
Were you able to hear?
Or no one wants to answer the question?
I don't know if Dave wants to answer it, but I think when we, when we did the survey, that was to, to get a sense of what people would be willing to pay. The average was $110.18 a month. And when that was, that was what members said, that was before we ever did plans or put a pen to the paper about how much everything would cost. And so 124 is the number that Dave's team, and Dave, you may want to comment on this, um, developed, um, based on a 12-year loan at four and a half percent.
When you mentioned the, um, less than, well, 30% said they would spend more. So you have averaged 100 all the way up to, what, 200? That's not what the members said. They said they wanted $100 or less, 68%. Does it make sense?
When you do an average, you do an average of all the responses. That's generally what's done, to, to do the math on that. We know that some members are not willing to pay any money to do renovations, and, and we understand that. But the average was 110. And when we added all these costs in of what we thought was the best possible plan to deliver to the members, it came to $124 a month. And every member will have to decide if that's something they can afford based on their own personal preferences, finances, and, and what they want to spend.
I, I didn't hear the specific question, but I'm getting the gist of the question now that I'm hearing the conversation. Um, in, in terms of, I mean, you could, you could spin those numbers any way you want. You could say 68%, $100 or less, or you can say 73% of $100 or more. Uh, it's the way you want to spin it. The other issue is when we came up with 100, we came up the survey, the survey had no, nobody had any clue what the plan was going to look like, what the design was going to look like. And the subcommittees have put together what I'll call a WOW plan that didn't exist back when the survey was put out there. So it's easy enough to say people only wanted to spend $100 per member per month more. Uh, the, the, the average was obviously more than that, but the reality is there was no plan in sight when that study was, was, was done. So now there is a plan, and the question to the membership is going to be, are you willing to vote to approve the WOW plan, or is, is this not something that's acceptable to the membership?
Thank you. You know, this is Kathy Dede, and I'd like to add one more thing to that. I've talked to several people that when they said they would be willing to spend, you know, $120 a month over, or $100 a month over, they didn't realize that the over was after the current loan was retired. They thought it was in addition to what we're currently spending. So I think some of that went on also.
Yes, I have a written statement. Can everybody hear me all right? I have a written statement. It takes about six minutes, and it's not a question, or it covers a number of questions to the board, and I have copies to give to the board members.
Is this a new letter or is it already?
Oh, this is the new statement. Now, as you know, I've written the board on several locations. Now, and this is another, you, you want me to?
Who, who is speaking? I, I didn't hear the name.
I'm sorry. My name is Larry Lindner, and I'm speaking for my wife and boys. We've been members here for 25 years.
Okay.
Here.
I have a written statement and, and a good copy of the board. It's our opinion, but we've even talked to many other members, and we feel we're also speaking for a number of other members as well. So this is, it's our opinion, okay? Uh, first of all, our comments are a response to the president's June 9th, well-written letter, by the way, well-written statement that he wrote to us. Many of our members do not agree that golf and facilities improvements are member-driven. We want, many of us want two votes, one on facility, one on golf, with costs and details for each. That's, that's principally I'm asking. You want member input, input, member desire, member support from all of, uh, communications you've given to us, and a yes vote at each will give you a clear answer to both of those. We've been members here in, in Stone Bridge for 25 years. We love Stone Bridge and want improvements. We question the magnitude of improvements and throwing dollars at all the problems that we have, if we have any problems. I personally followed the Strategic Planning Committee since November 2017, and some of you remember, I know some of you are here who were at the meeting, and I call, I asked the members to show up at the Bistro meeting, if you remember, and, and that, and 60 owners came, approximately 100 people showed up. And, and Bob Henry, I know was there because he was under the gun at the time he was president, answered us very well at that time. If you remember at that time, the January master site plan, which I've really been challenging ever since that came out, is had additional parking, west parking shop, west parking that was done without, we understand. I don't know about the east parking, what's going to happen with that in this new proposal yet. We have expanded Bistro, a larger kitchen, a, a duplicate of what we have upstairs, I assume, air-conditioned eating space. We think shade and misting would be a better approach to adding more people at the Bistro. Additional fitness, we think our fitness is underutilized at this point. Space is not needed. If we need new machines, okay. Restore, resort-style pool, underutilized. We, we don't think that a lap pool certainly is needed. I guess that's not what we, we have proposed at this point, but we, I've been, uh, I've been against.
Everything's frozen, guys.
We've lost the audio and the video.
Can't hear anything.
But we think the two projects need to be separated. They're not interdependent as our president claims, okay? He says it's also member-driven. Many of us do not agree with that. We think it's driven by the board, who are primarily, come from the Strategic Planning Committee, which has put this plan together. And by the way, it's hard work, and it's been done very well. I'm not complaining about how the planning's gone, what have you, or the number of consultants and what have you. But I do think that they're separate issues. The facility planning and golf are separate issues and require a separate vote. It's driven by also our management, and management wants more space. Realtors, consultants, satisfaction surveys, fitness group, focus groups, all of those seem to want this. I don't think it's member-driven. I don't think it's members' wants. There is no mention of the golf in the master site plan in 2018. My opinion is that the board and the Strategic Planning Committee decided that they were having so much negative kickback from the facilities planning, from the facilities changes and improvements, that they put the golf in because the golf would carry them, the facility improvements. That's my opinion. Many of us do not agree that the renovation or the second facility's improvement are interdependent. That's also stated in our president's letter, okay? We think those are two separate contracts, and could be handled separately at separate times, and it's not irresponsible to do that. I don't agree, I don't agree with that, okay? Some other miscellaneous comments. The issue of permits is brought up in our president's letter, but the issue of permits is not a problem until the single vote was proposed. Then they say we're going to have, we have two different projects, we'll have more difficulty getting the county to approve these permits. I don't believe that's the case. I'm also concerned about the rapidly rising labor and material costs, inflation, and you all should be too if we're going to get with this. There's no question about that. That should be a real concern. And what if we have an economic downturn in the next year or so before this is started? Operational costs and fees could exceed capital costs, and we have an unknown future in this country right now in some respects. I'm just asking again to give us a vote on each significant dollar expenditure. Golf is one, and facilities improvement is another. We think we should have separate votes on those. And the board, and as I understand, the ad hoc committee and the strategic plan, Strategic Planning Committee did not agree with that. In fact, they were unanimous for a one vote. Is that correct? That they were unanimous for one vote?
I'm not sure what the vote was.
Okay, well, I'm disappointed in that, that there was nothing, some no votes, okay? If you don't agree with separate votes, I expect the members to say no on only one vote. Many of us do not agree with your one vote approach, but we'll support the majority opinion. Finally, in response to competitive marketplace, there's a lot of things about competitive marketplace in here. Our limited footprint will never allow us to compete with all clubs, but our location, our landscaping, and our friendly atmospheric activities is envied by other clubs and other members. Our board has had two golf course renovations and one facility renovation in my time here, along with fitness facilities and equipment improvements. They've done a good job. We support our board, but we just do not agree with one vote approach. We're asking for two votes, separate votes, okay? And I respectfully submit this, and Tim, I'll give this to you, and you see that the board just stopped.
Yeah, so we had a quick one online, including the board. We have a call blocker, and I know everyone was disconnected for a period of time. So Mr. Lindner wrote a statement that he asked to be delivered to the board, so I'll scan that and send that over to you this evening, okay?
Thank you.
Great.
The other evening, I happened to be watching the, the other evening, the rain, the other evening, I was watching the local news, and there were three major construction projects being reevaluated. They forecasted the growth of cost 40% from $53 million to the $70 million. That's a lot of adjustment between 21 and 23. I think, I don't know, that we can afford a 40% cost increase. $100, $124 could go almost to $190. So we have to take a real hard look at money being spent. One other comment. Are we going to have a side door facing or window facing the pool this time? Last time we did a renovation downstairs in the bistro, they built a window and put a coat box up front of it. You know, that doesn't sound like a good plan. So we build another bistro and put two coat boxes and block the whole area. Doesn't seem like a good plan. People coming around constantly in their bathing suit, they don't want to, and you don't want to see them be there. Let's put on a hat. Also, there are men and women tee boxes. There are one, two, three, four, five. Thank you.
Anybody else want to make comments?
I apologize for sitting down here, because as you know, I had a back surgery except for my name is Nick White, and my background is I've been here for six years, and I'm actually well, a retired maritime lawyer. So I deal with water and its problems and movement all over the world. I've been down here and consulted with Florida Power Bank under docks just north of Tampa Bay. So, you know, I do have some knowledge on this, and one of the things that I'm worried about is basically hole number five. And this is basically selfish because the water is around my entire length of my entire property facing the back. And so I wonder, having been the panic and I, that's called after, you know, something's happened, a casualty, a collapse, a collision, et cetera, can I be guaranteed that there will be no problem with the water being put behind my house? Or am I going to face that? That's a question. And I know that I've talked to the architect, because I raised this issue with Mark, who I thankfully set that up. And my question really is, how do we get around this? I'm all for the golf course being reconditioned or et cetera, whatever you want to call it. But can we do this in stages where, you know, you're just reconditioning, and it costs so much money, and then you go to stage two, we want to make changes to the course, and then how much money is that? And then finally, the whole regilla, if you need that. Bottom line is, I can't, I can't vote for the changes on the golf course right now because it's too much wear effects my property. And I don't want to wake up one morning and my, and I and my pool as part of the golf course number five. And when I talk to the architect, you know, it gets to the point where it's a very contentious dialogue, because he started quoting me, well, here's the smoke I use for the county, et cetera. And when I said, well, what are the alternatives? He had none. So I think there's another issue there is, if we have an objection, we find an alternative, I think that it's up to the members to have that management and the consultants and the committees deal with that. Thanks very much.
So I could tell from the facial expressions of some of the board members that you may have had a hard time hearing that, that was Mr. White, some concerns about the pond being added behind his home on number five. Well, he had a comment about the possibility of separating the process into, I guess, regressing and then changes. Is that what it was?
Stage one, stage two.
Stage one, stage two. We're doing it all at once. And I know, I know that the golf course architect has reached out to you, and myself and Mark and others have. I think that at the end of the day, I understand that if this goes through a process to move a pond, it's pretty simple, you dig a hole, but it's not that simple when it comes to the county. Everything is interconnected. All the ponds are connected, there's different catch basins that outflow to the preserve. That's what keeps us from flooding. We had a water drain recently, and it's designed to move water. When we do a major renovation like this, we'll be able to improve how that water moves. And to the concern about what this might do to someone's unit, all of this is done with the county and software to water management to minimize any risk. In fact, we, we'll be doing soil moorings for just that reason, so that we can test these different areas to know what we're getting into. So if there's rock near a unit, you know, what needs to be handled gingerly, or what doesn't get moved?
None of these going to happen, because in my experience, you know, this is one of the first things that's done. If this not happens, then we're going ahead and playing.
So the question, sorry, I'm trying to get into two mice. So the question there was, again, from Mr. White about when this soil moorings would happen. In fact, Mark and I were just talking to Kip the other day about doing that sooner than later. We do want to wait until the ground is a little drier, because they do come out with heavy equipment to do those moorings. So after things dry out, then we'll be able to have a pond. Okay. Just speak out.
Hi, I'm Richard Zittle. I've been here for 20 years. I just want to make a couple of comments. First of all, I'd like to thank Larry Lindner, because he's been a great member for 25 years, and he's always been able to make positions worthwhile. He's been a great member of this club. I'd also like to say that a good friend of mine for over 40 years, Ed DeSalo, has through certain petitions tried to get the same issue of splitting the vote, and he's gotten a lot of support. He asked me originally to sign on to this, and I did it as a friend, because I know Ed DeSalo for a long time. He's a patent attorney and partner in a big law firm in New York, and he's very well-intentioned and not the least bit concerned about $120 a month. I just want to put that in, because he's, his list of signatures now, I believe, is over 200. So it's not to be taken lightly, and I'm happy to support him. My own issues might be somewhat smaller, but I've been going to the gym, and I've been swimming laps in the pools here for more than a decade. I've been going to the gym for the whole 20 years. I started swimming laps about 10 years ago with Rob Swan in the mornings. I want to tell you that I have never seen, in that pool, I can't identify five people that swim laps in that pool. I don't know who came up with this idea, but it is, if you ask somebody, would it be nice to have a lap pool? And they say, yeah. It really doesn't indicate the interest in a lap pool, right? And I can just imagine somebody coming out at 3:00 in the afternoon, which no one ever does, because there's people in the pool. Certain times, there's a lot of kids in the pool, which is great, visiting their great-grandparents. But, you know, those kids, they're going to waddle over into the lap area, and somebody's going to say, you want to get junior out of here? You know, and it's just going to be a stinko situation. I just don't see people using a lap pool. I don't see a lot of value in two bocce courts. Bocce is, it's free, all right? People are going to have to sign up for tee times for it, because it will get used, but it won't be a good facility for a club with 799 units. I question the value in that. And I question sincerely the value in the fitness center building, right? We added on to that, Jeff has a lot of room to do his fitness classes, and I give him a lot of credit because he's interested a lot of people who never use the fitness center to do something good for themselves in his classes. And I applaud that. But I have to tell you, I've been going to this gym regularly for 20 years. There's a lot of faces you're familiar with. And I wouldn't think really what I meant to say. And of all those faces, none of them are in favor of this expansion of that building. None of them see any need for it. All I've heard is that we're going to have a better view on the second floor than we have in the first floor. That's the only value to me. And I want, you know, and I look at the screen right now, you know, and I don't recognize the face with the gym in the background. I don't, maybe some of you use it, but I mean, I use it, and I, I do things every day. Sometimes I'm there in the morning, sometimes I'm there at 2:00, sometimes I'm there at 5:30. Hills will tell you that I come in occasionally in the evening when he's there. You know, and Tex Reynolds will tell you that he comes late in the morning or midday, and he'll see me there. And I tend to like to go early in the morning, but I've got my own routine, you know, seven days. I'm telling you, I'm not telling you anything. You've done a lot of work, I respect all the work you're doing and the goals you're trying to achieve. But I don't think the money that's involved in the swimming pool and the fitness center and the bocce courts, you know, for the most part, could just be eliminated. There's really no great need for it, but there is a significant expense. You start playing around with that pool, you know, and the building, it's going to be a big chunk of that facility's budget. And I'm not sure any of it's necessary, and I don't think the majority of people really would like to see you spend a few million dollars minimum, maybe more than a few, on those projects. Thank you very much, and thank you for all the time.
This is Kathy Taylor. May I speak?
Please. Go ahead.
Rich, I appreciate the comments that you've made. My husband and I do use the fitness center. I think the point that needs to be reiterated about the pool is the fact that when we increase the size of the bistro, it will encompass the current footprint of the pool, of the current pool. So if you increase the size of the bistro to accept the amount of people that want to use that facility, the existing pool will have to be eliminated. So it's, nobody in my mind on the ad hoc committee or from the members' point of view has asked for a lap pool or a resort size or style pool. But if we are going to build a new pool, why wouldn't we build the best and most attractive pool that we can? So keep that in mind. If we expand the bistro, the existing pool is in the way. The other thing, Rich, about the community center, you haven't asked for a room for a card group. You haven't asked for a room to carry on a meeting. When I go to Mary in the office to request a room for a house committee meeting, we had to go through 12 different dates to find a date that worked. So the community center will not only give us additional space for those people that want to use the fitness center, but it will give us space that we do not have right now. And our card groups, and our mahjong groups, and our poker groups, and our meeting space is terribly lacking. So just, I just wanted to bring those things up from a person that has not been on the ad hoc committee, but one who has also been here for 22 years and knows that what plans have been initiated at this point in time come from what our members have said they would like to have. Thank you.
Forgive me, I apologize for not recognizing you in the bottom corner, but as you sit there right now, there's no movement at all. It's very dark, and I didn't know it was you. And yes, she's in the gym all the time.
I'm sorry, Rich. There's a big, I'm out in Colorado, actually, and the place where we are has a huge picture window, and I can't get out of the shadow. Thanks, Rich.
Absences missed. And thank you very much for your comments, and I appreciate the time you've And thank you very much for your comments, and I appreciate the time you allowed me to give my comments. Now, P.S., I don't think the card room and the meeting room are worth the several million dollars required for this meeting.
Hi, I'm Hal Hilsen. By the way, Rich, I wasn't going to say anything, but since you mentioned my name, I thought it, above. I would, I would use a lap pool if we had one, but we don't, so there's no point in swimming in that shallow area where you really can't do any swimming. I'm glad that you can. One of the things that just surprises me, and this came from Larry's comments, that the information or the plan that's been put together doesn't come from the members, because I'm not sure what else could have been done. There've been numerous surveys, more than most people want to fill out. They were done by independent organizations, they gathered the information separately, they provided the results to us, they provided the results to every single member, they're available online, they're still available online, and the decisions were made based on that. Now, I'm on strategic planning, I'm not a mover and shaker in the group, I do the minutes, and that's about it, but I can tell you that no plan was made. I mean, I had, I said we put the golf course in with the, the fitness center and so forth in order to get it passed, I mean, that made no sense. I'm not going to comment on how many votes there's going to be, but one of the things that was interesting, and there's been a couple of letters going around, two of whom came from the Whiteheads, these, and these are new people who have moved in, or at least Steve was, and they're talking about how the plans made a difference for them. And we all know the property values are going up. Rising tide comes from, rising tide brings up all boats, but can you imagine, these people, every one of these people who've been paying these great prices on these properties, on our properties, has come into the clubhouse, seen the plans. Tim will tell you that the people who bought are extremely pleased with the plans, looking forward to them. Now, suppose they knew that there was a strong contingent attempting to derid the plans? Well, I'm not sure that we'd get the same interest, and if, God help us, they get turned down, that puts us in an even worse way. And you can talk to realtors, and they'll tell you that our plans are part of our sales pitch.
Anybody else want to make comments? Are there any other points?
Jim Fenderman, just a couple of real quick questions. One is, are we going to get an operational budget? What the operational cost will be after the facilities are built? And if so, kind of when?
You'll have, we'll have it all before the town hall meeting, we wouldn't expect you to vote on something before the costs.
And just in, and we are shooting for a vote in November, is that correct?
Correct, the town hall meeting on the 4th.
Okay, very much so, thank you.
Hi, I'm Gerald Baker, I've been a resident here for 24 years, and I agree a lot with what Larry said as far as having separate votes. I think I disagree with the fact that he thinks that the golf course is going to be pulled in by the bistro. I think it's just the opposite person. And people may support the bistro more so than the golf course. In my situation, I met with a couple of people at my property to discuss the changes that were being proposed behind my property, which I bought over 24 years ago, and now you want to change it, okay? An adverse situation, I feel. I would not support anything that's adverse against a friend or a neighbor for this club. I just can't do it. And I met with Jim, and so I tried to tell him then, I said, "Why don't we have two separate votes?" He said, "We can't do it." And then he says, "Why don't we just vote on each individual hole?" That was a ridiculous comment. I just think that we really look, need to look at it, because we had over 200 people, families, that have asked for two separate votes. Give us two separate votes, that's what we want. Thank you.
This, this looks like more of a comment from Mr. James McGuire. He says, "There appears to be a request among members to break the projects into separate items for voting, otherwise the entire project could risk being voted down, and get away from $110 that members agreed to. Why does Stonebridge not have accounting practices with operating budgets that include golf maintenance activities required every 10 to 12 years that equates to members being subject to a loan or assessment every 10 years? Not so much exceptional value." More of a comment, I think a lot of those issues were answered in the previous questions from the audience as well. And that, that's all we have.
Any other comments, questions? In that case, thank everybody for coming and listening, and meetings are over.
Thank you.
Thank you.